In light of the terrorist action on the weekend, we'd like to have a moment of silence to remember the folks that died in the terrible gunfire. If you don't mind, we'll do that before we sing our anthem. Thank you. And that, ladies and gentlemen, was the national anthem performed by our own County Classic Corral. And I believe that will be our anthem going forward. Mr. Toffelmeier, did you have something to come up and say? Please do.
We -- I'm John Toffelmeier. I'm the president of the County Classic Corral. We wanted to do a rendition of "Old Canada" for your use as you may see fit. We want to increase, I guess, the awareness of our corral in the community. And we want to let everyone know we have our annual Christmas concerts coming up, week from Saturday and Sunday at the United Church. Adriana Reynolds, our vice president, and Joyce Moran, our music librarian, are with me. And we're looking forward to presenting the concerts right after the Santa Claus parade on Saturday at 7:30, and then Sunday afternoon at 3 o'clock. So we hope that you and members of the community who are here and who are maybe watching will be able to attend. We have another spring concert in April, and so you can look forward to that, too. Our website is www-countyclassiccorral.com. We are also always looking for new recruits.
Thank you very much, Mr. Toffelmeier. And please express our thanks to the rest of the members of the Classic Corral. We certainly appreciate it. Much easier to sing, too, than the last one. Great. We miss you, but thanks very much. Thank you, ladies, as well. Appreciate it. So we'll move on in our agenda to the disclosures of pecuniary interest. Are there any amongst our council tonight? I see none. And then on to the adoption of the council minutes from the meeting held November 9th, moved by Mr. Jacobs, seconded by Mr. Verbeke. Comments or questions? All in favor? Carried. Is there any business arising out of those minutes? Nothing? Thank you. There are no public meetings or court of revision. And now we'll move on to the reports of staff and delegations. And we'll begin with the delegation from Leamington Minor Soccer, and that's Mr. Rumble, I believe. Gentlemen, I would ask you to give your names, and then -- I hate to remind you it's five minutes, but it's five minutes, and then the ejection seat goes. Thank you. You need to turn your button there. It's the button that says "Talk." Perfect. Thank you. It's better.
Sorry about that. My name is Oliver Barrow. I'm the current president of Leamington Minor Soccer. To my left, I have Bob Rumble, who is the acting vice president. And to my right, Tony Omar, who is our treasurer and past president in a long time involvement with Leamington Minor Soccer. I've got a couple notes in front of me, so I don't forget what we want to cover, but it'll be quick. First of all, I'd like to thank the president and past council for the approval that took place two weeks ago for the new soccer building, as well as the money being donated by Mr. Slater and Domino's, a huge asset without which we would not be able to get that building done as quickly as we are going to. I'd also like to recognize two people behind the scenes who are integral in getting that going for us, in Rob Sharon and Peter Newfeld, who were actively working to find secondary funds for us, too, so we could get that building going. We'd like to thank people we have direct contact with at the fields, keep things moving along, humming. Makes our job a little bit easier. Paul Shune, Terry Simons, and the maintenance crews, they do an outstanding job at the fields for us. Not only are they probably the best in Essex County, they're arguably the best in the southwestern Ontario. We've had a lot of teams come through there, and bar none, those fields are top-notch across the board. And those guys play a huge role in that being the case. We'd also like to extend a sincere thank you to Ken Brown. He's our go-to guy behind the scenes. We look to him for direction across the board on anything we may have, and he's always there and supportive and willing to help. We'd like to also mention Rick Atkins, Paul Anthony, and Cam McKay. They got the whole ball rolling about seven years ago. It's rolled slowly, but it looks like we're getting momentum now, and we'd like to sincerely thank those individuals for getting it all moving. The building and the facility itself is going to be a huge benefit to us, the community, for sure. We have close to 1,000 people, adults and children, playing competitive and recreational soccer at any given point over the summer months. The facility gives us dressing rooms, it gives us washroom facilities, it gives us covered areas for inclement weather. And it's been the one comment made to us that if we had this, this place is the best round, and we're really looking forward to that happening. On a wind-up day for us and for some of the tournaments for our competitive teams, we've had upwards of 500, 700, 800 people out there at any given moment in time, so the building will be a huge asset on those days for not only Leamington Minor Soccer, but our other organizations as well. So at this point, on behalf of myself and the two gentlemen with me, Leamington Minor Soccer would like to present the municipality with a check for $150,000 towards the contribution to building the building. And Deputy Mayor, if you'd be so kind as to accept this on our behalf.
Will do. Thank you. It's best I hand that right over. Yes. Oh, gentlemen, can you wait just a second? I believe there's a few council members that have a question or a comment. Mr. Jacobs.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I was just curious. I know that, you know, it's been a long time that you guys have been waiting for this, as we as well, to get this thing underway. And I was just wondering, and you mentioned the amount of tournaments and so forth that you do bring in through the summer months. What the announcement of this field house has generated more activity for you, and like, is there more interest in additional tournaments coming to town now that we have a facility such as this going up?
Well, what's happening right now is, I mean, we're sort of off-season right now, and we are looking at possibly running an early bird tournament with the Sun County. The Sun County program for us is the program that runs from June, July, and August. And we already have the wind-up for that. It involves a lot of teams from the county and Tilbury. And so we've got that already, but we're looking at trying to start up a wind-up tournament, which may go this year, it may not. We don't know for sure yet, but that's certainly one other one.
And we've also got a, with our travel organization with SC, they've started to develop a grassroots program with the Ontario Soccer Association, which is targeted to kids eight to 12 years old. And their games aren't a regular game schedule, they're targeted festivals. So on a given weekend, eight, nine, 10, 12 centers from Windsor, Essex County will come to one location, hold a series of games over the course of the day or two days. And with the facility, we're now in position to be able to put forth and host a couple of those festivals, hopefully throughout the year.
Fantastic. I'm glad to hear that. And I guess, like all the endeavors and work that you guys have put into this, I know it's been a long fight for the last two or three years, you've been coming back and forth to us here, but congratulations. It's a great job, and as well as to our administration and the assistance that they've given you as well. So good job, gentlemen. Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else? I want to say, too, it's not very often that we get organizations that meet us halfway, and that's commendable. It's been like that from the very beginning. When it first launched, I thought maybe it would peter out a little bit, and people would lose interest, but you haven't. You've stayed strong till the end, and that's very commendable to you and to all your members. So thank you very much, on behalf of all of us. Thank you. So now we're going to move on to the delegation from Communities in Bloom, and that will be Charlie Wright, Kathy Smith, Catherine Rediger, and Bill Shirck. And again, I'll remind you, we're trying to keep it close to five minutes. We have lots of things on our schedule tonight. If you don't mind staying within that timeframe, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor McDonald and council. It's a great pleasure with me tonight to do two things. One is to present with you our community profile book that details everything that goes on in Leamington. And part of the Communities in Bloom is to come up with the profile book along with the judges tour. The first part of that profile book is the judges tour for the two days, and then it goes on into the six categories: tidiness, environmental action, heritage, and so what, on. So if you go through it, you'll see the six different sections subdivided into four. I would like to turn the mic over to Catherine Rediger and Bill Shirck, who have donated the funds for the book, so that you can all have a copy, along with Mr. Newfeld and the economic development officer. Catherine and Bill.
Catherine Rediger. And thank you for allowing me to come here tonight to present these books. I figure they are something that all council members should have to read. It is a great trip through Leamington. I have had the privilege over the past two years of developing the book as editor and working with the great team of the Communities in Bloom committee. Without their help, these pictures and all this would not have happened. So they provided with the raw material, and I had the fun of putting it all together. Plus, I learned a lot more about Leamington. And more people have also said that they lived here a long time, and they've learned some more things about Leamington. So we're also donating a book to the library as well, because we figure the library should have it as a reference, as a reference book. So I hope you enjoy reading it as much as -- here's your winter reading -- as much as I have in preparing it for you and for you to have as a reference material. So enjoy.
Thank you very much. It's a beautiful book. Lots of time, lots of time, lots of money has gone into this. The full color, it's gorgeous, and it's bound beautifully.
I now know what it is to go 36 hours without sleep.
Oh, gosh. Well, thanks so much for your time. We certainly appreciate it.
Yeah. Just a little anecdote. It was also with the support of the administration where we could get the information, because the book has to go through all the bylaws and printing. So really, we're kind of almost like an auditor to find out what goes on in our town, and then we put it into the book, and then we take the judges on the tour, and we expand on it, try to highlight everything in Leamington. So you can go on a two-day tour of Leamington, and yeah, I think you'll find out stuff that you've never thought even existed. The second part tonight is Kathy Smith, and she was one of the judges who judged us this past summer at the Communities in Bloom. We had two judges, Ray Hurd and Kathy. And through the judging, we got an evaluation profile. And then from that, we related to either have five, four, three, two, or one blooms. We had five blooms. Our municipality next to us, their first year, unfortunately, they didn't get five, they got four. I just thought I'd throw that in. But Leamington, it's nice to have, and it was really up to the committee, that most of them are behind me now, and also the people who stepped up, both in their donors and donations. And I'll turn this over to Kathy, and she has the presentation to do later with the certificates, the five-bloom certificates for the municipality. But Kathy would like to talk briefly about the evaluation.
Great. Thank you. Welcome.
Honorable Deputy Mayor McDonald, councilors of the municipality of Leamington, the Leamington Horticultural Society, and the many, many volunteers of the Leamington Community in Bloom. Ray Hurd and I would like to congratulate the municipality of Leamington in achieving five blooms in the provincial competition in the 20,001 to 50,000 population range, and special recognition for your environmental action. Each of you have been given the profile book put together by your CIB committee. This is an extensive snapshot of your community. I encourage you to read through. You will learn many things of your community. Articles in this book will surprise you. I know I was surprised when I read through my very first profile book many years ago. Having lived in the community where I was born, raised, worked, and retired, I thought I knew a lot about Chatham Kent. Not so. It wasn't until I joined Communities in Bloom and did my first trial tour that I learned so much. I encourage each one of you to go on the tour next year with the judges. This will help you understand the judging, and will also help the judges get answers for their questions from the people who make the decisions for the municipality. It is a win-win situation. Leamington is a very vibrant municipality with a wonderful story to tell. The historic artifacts that are kept in the Leamington and Mercia Historical Museum need to be brought to your downtown core for all to see. Bob McCracken's historical knowledge of the agriculture area in your community is a treasure. Your historical buildings also tell a story and could be marked with historical plaques. Having a heritage committee to document is a plus in every community. A brochure giving a history of the homes and businesses could be produced. This would bring tourists into your area who love history. People are becoming more interested in the history of how our ancestors lived and the need to preserve that is gaining significance more and more. Your Mosaic Festival is a great cultural event and was enjoyed tremendously by Ray and I. We even got up and danced at one of the venues. It was a fun time. You are blessed with a wonderful waterfront, and the promenade is enjoyed by many. The historical plaques of ships lost are an added bonus when walking along the promenade. Your landscapes and floral displays in front of businesses and homes throughout the community tell the judges that there is pride in this community. The cleanliness of the municipality also tells the story of pride. You have a beautiful, well-kept green wall inside your municipal office building, but the grounds surrounding the building were not so well-attended, too. First impressions do count. Your parks tell a story of tree conservation and how you value urban forestry for your community. The environmental work done along the waterfront for pollinators and wildlife bring kudos to your community. The recycling of water in your greenhouses, the biogas production of greenhouse waste, the solar panel farm, the use of miscanthus grass to produce pellets for biomass fuel, the production of dried vegetables for third-world countries, Mr. Kuramoto and his healthy earth-certified vegetables, the eco-teams at the schools, the community gardens, I could go on and on and on. These all speak to how highly this municipality and this administration values environment and how it must be taken care of. Congratulations on this work. I have touched on all six criteria of Communities in Bloom. Leamington has many stories to tell. I encourage you to keep telling it. People, plants, pride, growing together, is what Communities in Bloom is all about, and we can never stop growing. At this time, I'd like to present you with the two plaques from Communities in Bloom.
Just do one last comment. There were some 18 different municipalities that did the provincial addition. This is a provincial. There's also a national, and there's close to 90 different communities throughout Canada that went national. And there is also international. And really, I think Chatham Kent went international this year, so you're competing against places in Italy, and Korea, and France, and England. So it's coast to coast, and it's also throughout the world and every continent except Antarctica. And it's a great promotion for our municipality, knowing that people who go to Point Pelee from all over Canada, if they know that we're a five-bloom Communities in Bloom community, it tells you they may know nothing about Leamington at all, but if you're five blooms, you've got something going on that's good. They may not know what it is, but it's got to be something, and hopefully they can stay and shop and go to eat and do something. So it's a great attraction for tourism. Did anybody have any questions at all?
I believe there's a few questions. Anyway, Mr. Hammond, I'll let you go first.
Deputy Mayor, thank you. Mine is not necessarily a question, Charlie, but I wanted to extend congratulations to yourself and your entire committee again. Fabulous thing you've done to be able to achieve that goal again. And I want to say a special thanks to Bill and Catherine for the book they provided us with. It's too bad you folks sitting in the audience can't get a look at this. It's beautiful. There's a lot of work and a lot of effort, especially in light of the fact that we've got a young contingent here tonight that's going to come forward. This is a history that they've got to look forward to seeing. And again, thank you very much for providing that for us. I appreciate it.
Catherine?
Just one thing. The young contingent behind us, they are in the profile book on the algae, on their work that they have done on the algae blooms. There is a big write-up in the book about that. So the schools, you're going to find out, are very, very active in what they do in our community, and we're very fortunate to have their leaders and teachers who are of that set mind.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, Charlie, for all the hard work for the past two years. We appreciate everything you've done. Thanks, Kathy, too, as well as Catherine and Bill. Well, now we will move on to our next delegation, and that is from the Leamington District Secondary School Echo Team, and Tam Doe is going to speak to council. There's a button to push there, Tam, that says "Talk."
Hello, my name is Tam Doe. I am a grade 11 student attending Leamington District Secondary School, and I am here to talk about Blue Dot Leamington's proposal on reducing our impact on our town's planters. So first want to start off by saying Leamington is a proud community in bloom. What does it mean for a community to be in bloom? Well, it gives our town a beautiful reputation. It gives our citizens a sense of pride. It attracts tourists, and it encourages collaboration among the community groups within our area. So Community Blooms motto. What is our motto? Well, it's enhancing green spaces in communities. Well, the blooms and green spaces that this motto refers to is not the one that we're talking about. As you can see in this photo here, it is a picture of a harmful algae bloom. This photo was taken in July 28, 2015, and it was a bloom in our lake area, which was the size of New York City. You may be familiar of hearing of a harmful algae bloom, also known as habs. This photo, now, of course, this isn't the most visually appealing color for our lake now, isn't it? Now, for those of you who don't know what the big fuss is about harmful algae blooms, it photosynthesizes like plants, so it requires nutrients, water, sunlight, and carbon dioxide. Now, what are the nutrients that this algae needs? It needs nitrogen, phosphorus, and potassium. So the more nutrients that it receives, the more algae there is. Harmful algae blooms caused the collapse of the Lake Erie in 1970s, and Lake Erie was then declared dead. So what is the biggest contributor? It's phosphorus. How do we know that? As you see in this image here, there was an experimental lakes project that was done in the year 1960 to 1970. This lake was divided into two sections. The top had carbon and nitrogen in it, and in the bottom half, there was carbon, nitrogen, and phosphorus. So as you can tell, in the bottom half, that is not as appealing as it should be. So what were the next steps after that project? Several companies started removing phosphorus from their detergents and cleaning products and sanitary sewers that were then upgraded in communities surrounding Lake Erie. So human and animal waste fertilizes algae as well. So after that, Lake Erie was then recovered. So harmful algae blooms can do more than just make our water look ugly. Algae can release toxins which can get into our drinking water, and not to mention, in Toledo and Point Pelee, they didn't have drinking water last summer. Once this water comes to high concentration, these can cause liver and nervous system damage. Decaying algae also smells terrible, which brings to our next topic, tourism. What happens is that beaches can close, and that affects the tourism revenue, which decreases. The fishing industry can also be impacted, because there's a lot of families within Leamington that are working in the fishing industry, which brings us to property values declining, recreational opportunities that are unavailable, and also pets and livestock can also become ill or die. So if we don't act right away, the entire Lake Erie ecosystem could collapse again. So Leamington depends on a healthy lake area. So as our next step, the town is planning to spend $2.5 million to enhance the waterfront to attract tourists, so the people who will visit will want to be there and will spread word about it. If we were to reduce harmful algae blooms, it would provide jobs in the tourism industry, maintain fish populations, which affects our fishing industry, and since so many families are employed in the fishing industry, it would stimulate our local economy. It would also improve property values, which means for more tax value, and it would improve the health of our residents, because then the people in our town wouldn't have to smell the terrible smell that it creates, and we wouldn't have to drink unsafe water. So what is something that everyone can do? Well, as you can see in this photo here, this is a picture of Miracle Grow, a popular fertilizer that we use. As you can see in the corner there, there's a ratio of 1052 and 10. And what is contained in there is the ratio of nitrogen, phosphorus, and potassium. The middle number, obviously representing phosphorus, is extremely great in that photo. So what we would encourage people to do is purchase products that don't have a large amount of phosphorus in there. So the Great Lakes Protection Act calls for a 40% reduction in phosphorus runoff in 10 years. Farmers do require some phosphorus to fertilizer crops since they are knowledgeable about its application and are working hard to reduce the amount of phosphorus. its application and are working hard to reduce the amount of phosphorus. And also, they can use the fertilizers with phosphorus because they are the ones that are feeding us. As for homeowners and municipalities, we play a huge role, because we are often applying more phosphorus-containing fertilizer than it is necessary to our flowers and lawns. So the composition used by the town of Leamington is 18, 9, and 18. So our goal is to minimize the amount of phosphorus within our fertilizers. So our proposal is to collaborate with the town of Leamington and the Leamington Horticultural Society to reduce the proportion of non-native phosphorus-demanding species in town gardens, planters, and hanging baskets. So instead, what we could do is we could start planting native flowers that are, native flowers in southern Ontario, perennial flowers, and any flowers that do not require phosphorus. For example, we can avoid planting petunias because they require a lot of phosphorus. So there's different types of flowers. For example, I drew a sketch here of different flowers that could, that don't require phosphorus to plant. And also, we could plant flowers that attract pollinators, such as bees and butterflies, since there is a decline in their population. So the area that we have, ideal area that we want is the marina, because there's a lot of plants and pots where when we give, when we give it the fertilizers with phosphorus, it runs right into the lake. So we're basically feeding the lake with phosphorus. So these are some of the examples as well, with the plants that do not require phosphorus, just a few of them up there, but there's several other ones. So these are some of the different communities that have took initiative towards this, towards this cause. So for example, there's Sudbury and Berry who have worked towards reducing the amount of phosphorus, and there's also Ohio and Michigan, New York. So at this time, we are just proposing a reduction in phosphorus use and forming a partnership with the town to help achieve this goal. So our request, we have already discussed that, a partnership of this, on this initiative with the LDSS Echo Team and the Leamington Horticultural Society, and they are very excited about this. They have already mentioned that they are all in for this. So we intend to apply for grants available to school groups for community partnerships to improve environmental sustainability. So would you agree to support this initiative if our grant applications required a letter of support or approval from the town?
Thank you, Tam. Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Gentlemen, comments, questions? Mr. Wilkinson?
I'd like us back up one screen here. I didn't have a chance to look at the request.
Oh, yeah.
Well, Marian, can you put that back on? I don't have a question. I'd like to read through that again.
While you're reading, could I ask Mr. Sharon if he has any input? Rob, do you have any input on this? Because this is something that's totally out of my bailiwick.
Yes, I'm sorry. And perhaps along the lines of Council Wilkinson, I think, you know, perhaps it's important that we understand exactly what's being asked of the municipality at this time with regards to, you know, to this issue. Is it simply, well, it seems like through the literature here that they're going to apply for grants and they're looking for support in basically reducing phosphorus. But with regards to specifically municipal actions and our use of fertilizers for planting and hanging baskets and flower pots and those sorts of things, it would help to appreciate what the group is looking for from the municipality. Certainly, if it is to work in collaboration to identify hotspots and try to reduce phosphorus in certain areas while appreciating that, you know, there are benefits, especially aesthetically, to the bigness and boldness of flowers and pots and other areas where maybe it would be more appropriate, that's certainly one consideration. If it's an outright ban on cosmetic use of phosphorus and fertilizers, that's certainly another consideration for discussion. So perhaps if we have a little bit of follow-up on that, we can further that discussion off for the comment.
Thank you. Are you, are you looking to sit down with the group? Is that what you're suggesting to do?
Deputy Mayor, perhaps even tonight, if the group can provide some clarification. I mean, if we're just looking at this point in time to work towards reducing it, especially in potential hotspot areas, then, you know, certainly, you know, that's, we would be willing to do that. I think that's a great idea. If the request is, you know, tonight to decide to, you know, ban the use or the municipality to commit to stop using any type of fertilizer for plantings, you know, that's certainly a different conversation.
Okay. Ms. Jeffrey? Could you answer that?
I have Tam out here. She did mention that some communities have imposed a ban, and they've had similar problems. So that's not, that's not exactly what we're asking here. We're just thinking, we have an idea for a way to reduce the amount of phosphorus used by just changing the types of plants that are planted. And when we discussed this with a member of the Horticultural Society, they brought it to the group, and they were really excited to learn more. They've invited us to speak in January to teach them more. They weren't, didn't, a lot of them didn't know about the connection between phosphorus and algae blooms, and they very much do not. It's part of their agenda to promote environmental sustainability. So we've noticed that there are a lot of grants that encourage the collaboration between school groups and community groups. So that would be the LDSS Echo Team in collaboration with Blue Dot Leamington and the Horticultural Society to improve communities. So we're thinking this could be a win-win, because we could provide food for pollinators, which is, I mean, I know Mr. Neufeld here has been a promoter of that. So we actually thought that if we apply for grant money, then that could be used actually to either integrate some of these plants with other annuals that are preferred, or look at just switching to annuals that require less phosphorus, or having specific pollinator pots, almost like an experimental thing with a sign or something saying, "I'm a pollinator garden," and then our Echo Team and Blue Dot members could transplant those perennials in the fall to, along the trail, which I know is an initiative that's already been started.
Okay.
So that's the idea, is not a ban, just a, kind of a different way of providing color to our town that doesn't require as much phosphorus.
Did you want to reply to that?
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Certainly, we would, we'd be in favor of sitting with the group, and we have Horticulturists through our Public Works Department, and I know Ken Brown would be interested in having those discussions, so.
Actually, Ken got back to us about the ratio and of nitrogen to phosphorus potassium. So 18, 9, 18 demonstrates that they're already concerned about this, so that's great.
So certainly, we don't have a issue in sitting down and talking about it. We think it's a great idea.
Great. We just had to get support for, I mean, sorry, I'm not, I'm not pushing for this now. I'm just saying, the reason we had to come to council is that we didn't want to have you receive a call asking if you support this, if you had never heard of it before.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So then, I'm going to open the floor to, I'm going to go back to Mr. Wilkinson. Did you want to still ask some questions, Tam, based on what you're, you're reading up here or what was being discussed here tonight?
No, I like what Mr. Sharon had to say. I'd like for us to be able to talk it over with the proper parties. Ken Brown, our Horticulturists, of course, and Horticultural Society sounded fantastic. I'd like to get everybody's input before we, like you say, make a really big decision like this, so I'd like to hear what the rest of council has to say.
Sure, thank you. Mr. Hammond, did you have a comment?
Yes, just a comment. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. First of all, Tam, you did a great job. I spoke to her outside, and she was a little nervous about coming in. Usually, it's our man Carlos back there that we hear from all the time, but I was going to move that we accept their request, but I understand that we might want further inquiries about it through Rob, so.
We would appreciate the guidance of the experts you have on staff as well.
Anyone else? So then, we're going to leave it at both Mr. Sharon and the Echo Team sitting down, having a conversation, and then a report back to council before we make a decision? Does that sound good? And satisfies everyone? Okay, so it'll be collaboration between the young folks, the medium folks, and the older folks. So that, that sounds excellent. Isn't this a wonderful example of working together, though, and having input from young people? That's great.
Yeah, the Horticultural Society was, I mean, very receptive to working together, and so that's a really great thing.
Good. And Tam, thank you very much. We're not a scary bunch up here, so you don't have to be afraid. Thanks so much for doing that, though. We appreciate it. And then we'll, we'll look forward to hearing from Rob as to the discussions you have. Okay, thank you. I'm in the older crowd. So we're going to move on to report number, well, the fourth report, PLA 58-15. And is that Brian doing that with the, with the Larry Santos Destiny Estates subdivision, please?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. As noted, Larry Santos Construction Limited has submitted applications to amend the draft-approved plan of subdivision and secondly, remove the holding symbol from phase two of the said subdivision. Firstly, the amendment to the draft-approved plan involves adjusting the lot line between two lots on the draft-approved plan, known as lots 38 and 39, resulting in increased area for lot 39, which allows a proposed semi-detached dwelling to comply with the lot coverage provisions of the existing R3 residential zone. Amendments to the draft-approved plan are permitted under the Planning Act, subject to approval from the county. The county, the county in this particular case has requested that the applicant obtain support from municipal council prior to their consideration of the said amendment. Administration is of the opinion that the request is minor nature. It poses no changes or impacts, or no changes to the conditions of draft approval, proposed services or utilities being required, nor does it change the impact or the character of the type of structure to be built. If council approves the said request, administration will forward the resolution to the county for their consideration. The county's approval of the request will be required prior to the registration of the final plan for phase two. The holding symbol basically is purposes, purpose of it is to ensure that proper servicing and phasing is in place prior to the issuance of any building permits. Administration is satisfied that such is the case, and that residential construction within the second phase of development can proceed upon provision of the normal building permit requirements. Okay. Notice of intention of the removal of holding, hold, holding symbol is proposed to be issued this Wednesday, and will indicate the date for the, for the passing, or the bylaw to remove the holding provision to be passed, which we're aiming for December 7th. So the notice will go out, and then the, aiming for the target date of December 7th. Should also be noted that there are no appeal opportunities for the removal of the holding symbol. Finally, it's administration's recommendation that the approved draft plan of subdivision be revised in accordance with the revised draft plan that was submitted with the application, that council's resolution of support be forwarded to the County of Essex for approval, that the application remove the holding symbol for the lots found in phase two of the Destiny Estates Plan of subdivision be approved by council, and that the clerk be directed to forward the amending bylaw, which is number 51815, for council to consider. Much noted, it will be target date of December 7th. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Brian. Appreciate that. Comments or questions or motion? Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Brian, you mentioned that all of the requirements are met under the designation, so we can remove the H, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Being with that, I would move the recommendation here.
Moved by Mr. Jacobs, seconded by Mr. Wilkinson. Comments, questions? All in favor? Carried. Go to it. Mr. Santos? We're looking forward to all the houses you're going to build down there. Looks great, by the way. Looks really good down there. Good, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thanks, Brian. Sorry, Brian, we'll have you do the next report as well with the second dwelling extension.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The second application pertains to 394 C Cliff Drive West. The owner of the said property submitted a request for an extension to their existing second dwelling agreement, which expired on October 21st, 2015. The extension that they're looking for is until June 30th, 2016. The owners indicated due to poor weather conditions and a, and a high demand for local tradespeople that they were not able to meet the deadline that was set within the existing report. The owners also indicate that they're confident with this, the additional seven or so months that they will be able to, to complete the new dwelling, remove the existing dwelling, and install the new septic system within that timeframe. Should be noted that Building Services throughout this timeframe will make periodic inspections to, for the different works on the property that require their inspection approval. So we will be not keeping tabs, but just aware of where the development's at. And also, planning services will flag the expiry date and work with Building Services as noted, so we're certain that the, the works will be, will be completed by the June 30th deadline. In the case that it isn't, we do, there is a $1,000 deposit down, and if municipality is required to do the demolition, the additional fees would be, would be placed on the tax roll for that property. Therefore, it's our recommendation, or administration's recommendation, that the request amend the second dwelling agreement to permit the extension of the use of an existing dwelling during the construction of the new single detached dwelling until June 30th, 2016 be approved, and that the clerk and mayor be authorized, or that the mayor and clerk be authorized to enter into an amending agreement, which we have prepared for the owner to, to sign, for the mayor and clerk to, to sign subsequently.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Counsel? Mr. Wilkinson?
Sounds like a fair and legitimate request to me. If there's no out of case, or no objections from any of the neighbors, I'll recommend the, support the recommendation.
Seconded by Mr. Rubiki. Comments, questions? All in favor? Carried. Thank you, Brian. So ladies and gentlemen, I think we'll move forward on number eight, I believe, is it? Report number eight on the Rickway Land Development, because there's people in the audience, so we want, we're just going to bump you, I'm sorry, staff, just so these folks can get their opportunity in a little bit earlier. So for that report, I'll move it over to Rob. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The report on the agenda tonight is to recommend two things. It's to recommend that council approve the sale of a residential lot on Rickway Drive to Habitat for Humanity, and the second matter is to seek approval to use the proceeds of the sale of that lot to construct a small park on Rickway on the remaining lands. Just a touch of background on the issue, the municipality owns two lots on Rickway Drive, as shown in the attachment. The parcel to the east or to the right, when you're looking at it, those are the lands that are zoned recreational, and the lands to the west is a residentially zoned lot. It's an R1 lot with servicing, water connections, sewer connection, and storm connection that have been there for a long time. They've actually been there since 1973. So the subdivision was, was built in and around 1973, and since that time, the municipality has owned those lands, and those lands have remained either open green space, in my understanding. I did talk to some residents who are longtime residents of the area, who informed me that, yes, unfortunately, we didn't have the knowledge around here any longer, but the residents who were there told me, yes, you know, there were, there was park play equipment there at one particular point in time, though we've removed it because it was getting old, and it was never replaced. In, in and around 2008, there was a proposal on these lands. A developer was looking to potentially build a multi-residential unit, a multi-residential building on the lands, and was looking to purchase the lands from the municipality. So at that time, the municipality went to the residents and asked them, we went for public input, as we should do in these types of situations, and the residents overwhelmingly came forward and said, you know, this is a parkland, we, you know, we want it to, it's been a park ever since we've been here, and we want it to remain a park. That was overwhelming response from the residents, and council of the day... That was overwhelming response from the residents, and council of the day accepted that. They retained the lands with the intention to one day construct a park on the lands, directed administration to put the reconstruction in the five-year plan. Unfortunately, that was 2008. Unfortunately, the park has not been built, obviously, to date. The primary reason for that is simply competing priorities. I know this will be the fifth parks capital budget that I'm involved in, and this project has not made it to the top, both in administrative recommendation to council and then in council decision. The last few years, we've been putting money away to build our soccer complex, you know, we're looking at waterfronts and waterfront projects that we have on the go for next year, how we have the Kinsman-Bald Diamonds reconstruction projects. Those are specific parks-related projects that simply have a large community impact, and what they do when those projects are weighed against small neighborhood projects such as this, it is difficult for the smaller types of projects, simply because of the number of people that are impacted, for these types of projects to become top of priority. Especially, I do want to mention that the master plan recommends that we do not develop more of these smaller parquets, because they are, they can be challenging to manage, although there is inherent value in having these small parks for communities, certainly having a park close in your neighborhood and not having to have children, you know, cross a busy Robson Road to get to Rick Aken Park, or Erie South to get over to Seacliff Park. So, in recognizing that, you know, I was hoping that we had a strategy here that would accomplish two very important things, because we, the municipality was approached by Habitat for Humanity, who was looking to build a home in Leamington, and was inquiring if the municipality had any buildable residential lots, of which this is frankly, our only buildable residential lot that we own, but it has this history as being, you know, adjacent to and at one time part of this small neighborhood park. So, when this plan was put together, you know, certainly, it had the best intentions. You know, if we could sell this lot to Habitat, we'd see Habitat for Humanity home built in Leamington, and then we would have proceeds from the sale of this lot, and that could certainly initiate the building of a small park for the residents in this area. And so, that issue conceptually was brought to council. Council directed us to proceed with going up to the public and talking to residents. We did that. So, we had an open house, and we specifically mailed to all the residents of Rickway and Franklin, because we identified those as likely the highest users of this park, invited the residents to come out to the open house here, what we were thinking and why we were thinking of doing what we were doing. We did have residents that came out and spoke. Some residents were in favor. They just said, okay, when you develop the park, you know, get community input on what the park looks like. You know, Ken and I and internal staff, we just put a real high-level concept of, maybe we could have play equipment on the inside, a path around the outside, but they were looking for more input, and that's certainly, if it went that way, something we would explore. Others expressed that they liked the park as is, that having open space, you know, a green area in which to play and fly kites, do those sorts of things, was important for the community, and they liked it. And if they had the option between, you know, keeping it as is, open green space, or this option that they would prefer keeping it as is, ultimately, you know, the best thing perhaps would be to, you know, develop a park over the larger area, though I've spoke to some of the challenges with regards to that. I did want to mention, and certainly, and sorry, I know the recommendation in the council report and from administration recommends selling the lot, taking the proceeds and building the land, you know, these are not decisions that we take lightly when we hear from residents and residents. You know, sometimes there's differences of opinion, and we have to weigh those, and we have to give our best recommendations. So, we don't take it lightly, and regardless of what may happen tonight in council's decision, you know, we're certainly committed to working with residents on a go-forward in either the design of the park, or, you know, perhaps a different strategy going forward. After the open house, I did receive a phone call from someone, a developer, basically saying, hey, you know, they're still interested in developing a multi-residential apartment building over those lands, and I included that in the report. It was too late to get public input on that consideration a couple of weeks ago when we had the public meeting, but certainly, we heard from the residents on that specific proposal seven or eight years ago now, and the residents were very clear on what their opinion on that consideration would be. I did receive a phone call, and then I did want to mention that after the open house, we did specifically mail out this report to all the residents, the same residents, inviting them to come tonight. However, I received some phone calls. A lot of residents didn't get the letter until today, and so, I know that there are some that wish to speak, and we have already talked about, you know, allowing that to happen. So, my apologies that the letter didn't arrive until today, and I did have a resident call me, a resident who said, I've lived here since 1973. So, again, that was some good discussion. And basically, her opinion was she would like to see the entire area be developed as a park, but certainly didn't want to see a large, multi-residential apartment building go into the area. And her comments, again, were, you know, that these types of small community parks have a lot of value to the community, because they know that the kids are just down the road, they're not, you know, across the street and down at the larger park. And I know that there's a delegation from Habitat for Humanity who wants to say a few words about their build as well. So, the recommendation in the report is that the sale of the municipally-owned lot to Habitat for Humanity be approved, and that the $50,000 sale from the lot be placed into reserve to specifically be used and to develop a park on the remaining recreational parcel known as Rickway Park.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. First, though, we'll have Mr. Vanderlist, Vandervlist. Thank you. We weren't sure who you were. Welcome. No, no, no problem. Welcome to our municipality. Could you just, Mike, just press that button there. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with you. Habitat for Humanity is not expanding as much as we're coming back to where it all started. In 1991, three members of this community sat at a kitchen table and said, we should do this here. For three years, they sat there by themselves until the Leamington newspaper actually ran an article that one was going up to the Jimmy Carter Build in Waterloo. The next month, they had to move out of the kitchen, because 45 people showed up. Since then, 59 homes have been built by Habitat for Humanity Windsor-Essigs to support families in all of Essex County. The board came together about a year ago, actually, a year to this month, and said, our name is Windsor-Essigs, we do predominantly our work in Windsor. It's time we went home. We announced the expansion and said that we were going to come and we were going to stay, because nobody wants to come to a town, do something, pick up, and go. We've done that. We opened an office back on April 22nd, working with another member of community agency, Access County Community Support Services on Talbot Street. The Restore, which is our social enterprise that funds the organization, because we do not receive annualized government tax dollars, will open on March 5th in your community. And we're not leaving, because I signed a 66-month lease. Well, my board did, so I'm good on that. The idea is, we're coming because people need homes. And if you give me my soapbox, and you'll have to hit the ejection sheet in five minutes, so just give me a warning before, because when I'm given the opportunity to speak about what Habitat means, there are the peripheries that development in your city means an increased tax base that will enhance the city coffers and tax money, so you can do further development. There is that piece. There's the piece that a family will have a home that will change their lives, and not so much for the parents, but their children and their children's children. Boston Consulting Group's report shows a two-generational increase of tax of economic value of $175,000 that it brings with each Habitat home. Now, do we give the homes away? No. It's not a gift. We sell it at a, with a mortgage, but there's no interest paid on the mortgage, so the family can pay for a home, raise their kids in a safe neighborhood, and then take those funds that they save on the interest. And if they look at college, because 75% of the children growing up in a Habitat home attain a higher level of education than they would if they did not. So, these are periphery benefits that are brought when Habitat for Humanity. And it's about building a community, because we do it an old way. When we talked about the Restore, I went out to the Et Cetera shop by the MCC, Menonah Community Church, because we're bringing in another social enterprise, and I provided information, asked them to call me. I went out to the Society shop, the St. Vincent de Paul Society, and did the same piece. So, they know that we're not coming to take it away. In Windsor, we do a large piece with E-Waste. That fund through a mayor's challenge between Leamington and Kingsville, part of the youth programs provided with Access Community Support Services. We're not going to touch the E-Waste piece, because we're not coming to be, to take things away. We're coming to help build. And I look at the plaque that showed during the O'Canada sign back in 1854, when Ralph Foster joined a committee to name this city, because you had a post office down, and it was growing. And it became known as Leamington, after Leamington Spa in England, so he kind of worked that, you know, get his own town represented here, but it's about development and moving forward. And I know, when I was speaking to the residents of Rickway, they are not in deference to Habitat for Humanity, it's about the passion they show for their neighborhood and good, because what it means is there's a neighborhood that has single-unit dwellings, semi-detached unit dwellings, and multi-unit dwellings in the same community. You see an auspice of socioeconomic class of citizens who are passionate about their town and passionate about their city. Well, that's what Habitat for Humanity looks for. We look for a place where we can put a home that they can take pride in, that their neighbors take pride in, so they can change someone's life. And I'm going to end, because I can go on about the fiscal aspect and how it assists the economy, that when we do this, it's not just about the home being built, but about the terms of brotherhood and sisterhood formed between our partners, or the fact that, when we announced the expansion in the South Essex, Leamington was on the phone to Habitat going, we want you here. Like, okay, we'll come. It's about, last November, the November 29th, we announced that we were coming at the dedication to the McKinnis family in Windsor. Six months before that, at a pancake breakfast fundraiser, the father, Robert McKinnis, got out about three words before he started crying that he was done. We applauded him at the dedication when he got up to about 45 seconds, and that's all he could get out, because a family where he works full-time, the cabinetry industry, five kids, one with a challenge, his wife staying home to assist with the care, living a street behind Wine Dot in Windsor, where they knew, picking up beer bottles and other sundries every morning. We told them we would have them in before Christmas. Paperwork glitched, December 23rd, they got the keys, and on Christmas Day, they didn't open up gifts to each other, they opened up the boxes they brought with them. That's what Habitat brings, and I know, and I appreciate the passion of the people who will speak as well. It's about bringing that passion on a permanent basis to South Essex. And when I say South Essex, it's municipalities of Kingsville and Leamington towards working to greater independence on the auspice of Windsor, so we can keep the paperwork, the boring things dealing with CRA, Ministry of Labor, and allow a social enterprise to exist here, so we can build more homes. And that is the sole aspect of why Habitat exists. Sure, we'll sell used stuff. Okay. It allows the organization to exist, so we can hopefully put more people in this city, so when they wake up that Christmas morning, just like the McKinnis family did last year, a brighter future. And my board chair, past chair, is here, and some of the board would like me to talk to more specifics sometimes, but often, when I'm given a soapbox, I can't help myself but talk with the passion that truly Habitat, and I'm pretty sure I'm at my 300-second limit, so I'm going to stop there.
Just ready to push. No, you're fine. Thank you very much. Thank you for that. So, council, I'm also going to let, if it's your wish, I would like to allow the residents who want to speak to this, but I would need a motion. Mr. Jacobs, seconded by Mr. Verbeke. Sorry, I don't look over here, it just seems to be these fellows that raise their hands quickly. All in favor, then? Carried. So, who would like to speak first? When you come up, give us your name, and five minutes, again, the button.
Will the other residents also be allowed to speak?
Yes. If they wish.
All right. I appreciate the opportunity to address you guys.
I need your name and address.
Larry Jekyll, I live at 9 Rickway. I'm across and slightly west of the park, a couple doors down. Okay. I appreciate the opportunity to address you. I don't have a formal presentation. I got the letter at 4 o'clock this afternoon, okay? And I appreciate the balanced and accurate description of how the public meeting went and what went on, but I have a sense of frustration about what's going on with our park. 11 years ago, we moved in, and there was equipment. My son played on the equipment, and all of a sudden, the equipment started leaving. The last thing to leave was a sign from the IODE by that tree on the side of the road. And then, the council at the time suggested that we fundraise for furnishings for the park. Well, the IODE is a charitable organization, it was fundraised. The equipment covered the residential lot and the proposed park area. All of it was park. Now, 78 years ago, we had a petition saying, don't sell our park, don't put an apartment building on it, and council listened. Now, the first we hear of a proposal, there's a buyer for part of the park, never knew that it was a building lot, thought it was all of our park. I saw the stakes in the ground, so I went looking at council minutes. In early July, you guys gave a tenth of the park to the apartment building, 380 square meters of our park was given away, more than 10% of it, and now, more than a third of the remainder is going to be sold, and this is not about Habitat for Humanity. They're wonderful. The idea that a family in need gets a home is great. It's life-changing for the kids. I believe that completely. But that's my park. Don't sell it. If you don't want to put equipment in it, that's fine. My kids need a place to kick a ball, I can't do that in my backyard. I can't play frisbee in my backyard, and I can't fly a kite in my backyard, but I can in that park. You cut it down, I won't be able to do that with my kids anymore. Please, don't sell part of our park. Now, I did make a couple of notes, so we'll see if I covered everything. I said I was frustrated. I think that maybe is coming through. The building lot was developed with services probably by the original developer of Rickway, but it was never built on, and it's always functioned as part of the park. It's available for sale as a residential building lot, because the zoning was never fixed, but it was occupied as a park since that time. So, even though the zoning doesn't match the existing long-term use of that park, doesn't mean it should be okay to sell it. It's part of our park. I even thought about trying to say that there's a right of way, because we walk through that park, residents walk through that park, it's the shortcut to the marina. We've got wonderful equipment at the marina, we've got wonderful equipment at Seacliff Park, there's no equipment there. And, you know, sad as it is to say, I'm actually kind of okay with that. I want open space, maybe a few more shade trees. That's my personal opinion. I don't need you to spend a lot of money on the park. I don't mind that we're a small neighborhood that doesn't get priority. Just mow the grass every week or two and leave it alone. I hope that if you do that and not sell it, I hope you can find a spot for Habitat for Humanity, because it's great, but I don't want to be back in seven years saying, don't sell my park again. I really don't. Now, there's a number of neighbors here, because we went door-to-door as quickly as we could before the meeting and to get food into our kids before we came, so I'll, I don't know if you have any questions for me or any comments that I can help.
Questions? Anyone? Not right now, thank you, Mr. Jekyll. Is there anyone else from the neighborhood that would like to speak?
At least put, if you put your hands, residents that are here that are concerned about this, please. Okay? So, that's all I could get together in short notice that we had to come tonight.
That's okay. Do they want to speak, or no? Yes? Great. Thank you. So, your name and address, please.
It's Monica Ziba, 11 Rickway. Very close neighbor to my friend here and the other neighbor. This is a big area that kids, actually, the whole neighborhood of kids go there and play. We don't want this park to be built as a Habitat, please. Build it somewhere else. It brings our kids closer there.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Henry Butello. I live at 12 Rickway.
What's your name again, sorry?
Henry Butello.
Okay, thank you.
I live at 12 Rickway. I'm the guy that's got the big pool in the back. And I believe there's a town fence that's along my, my property there. So by restructuring the zoning or whatever you guys got to do, I'm going to be in for building a new fence. Because I'm assuming that a chain link fence there with wild grapevines will not be sufficient for privacy factor in the back, so I would eventually move my fence. And my daughter's disabled. She's got cerebral palsy and she learned to walk on grass on that park. I'm the rookie of the neighborhood. I only moved in there four years ago, so I don't have the stories that everybody else does. But I enjoy the green space there because my daughter does enjoy playing in that green space. And just like Monica and Larry said, yeah. It's a great area for all the kids to gather up and play together. I don't know what else to say.
Well, that's good. That's, that's good. We got the idea. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
My name is, is this thing on? My name is Lyra Bishop and I'm at 17 Rickway. When we approached earlier, thank you very much for including in collaboration our community. That was great to receive those information in the mail. I think we can all agree that we have a safe neighborhood and we have a wonderful community to live in, right? And thank you for being our leaders and we appreciate that and the work that you all do for our community. In our town, in our community at Rickway Park, I think that what you've heard is concern, right, and care. And whatever happens, whatever happens, I would just like us to continue to collaborate, work together, communicate about what's going further with these decisions. And that way, we can all be on the same page, on the same board. And whatever the decisions are going to be, that would be what I would request. And I think everyone might, would probably agree just to be kept in the loop and, and working in a collaborative environment. So, thank you.
Thank you. Doesn't look like there's anyone else. So council, questions, comments, discussion? Who wants to start? Mr. Rubiki.
Thank you, worthy acting mayor. I guess the first one would be the privacy fence that would come under any site plan. They would have to put something up, I'm assuming. But never want to do that, so I don't know Tracy or something with the planning, if that's possible, because give somebody the benefit of the doubt.
Development would not be subject to site plan control, so it wouldn't come forward to council that way. It's subject to a building permit. But that certainly, that is part of the condition of, of development. We may request that a fence be put up if that's what council's direction is.
Okay, and the second one is if, if you don't put up a fence on, on the side there, I'm assuming you're not going to put up a fence along Robson Road, I mean, on the back part of it there. But you're still going to be able to get the park, that proposed park that's there now, will still be able to be open to get to the marina, correct?
Mr. Sharon.
Through you, deputy mayor. The, the land south of the southern property line, it's private property. So, you know, certainly we appreciate that it is used currently to get down to Robson Road, but we couldn't guarantee access today to those lands.
Anyone else? Mr. Jacobs.
Thank you, deputy mayor. I'm just curious that the amount of use in that park, and to be quite honest with you, I travel down there quite a bit, down Robson Road and hit the marina and look over the water and so forth. But to be honest with you, I've never seen anyone in that park. I'm sure you use it. You know, I'm not doubting that you do go out to the park there. But I've never seen that much activity in there. Is there that much there that, like, by shrinking it a little bit, that it would, would create a difference or? Again, I'm not doubting that there's people go to the park. Please, yes, if you don't mind.
Again, no, I wouldn't say it's used a lot, but it's the way it's used. We go to play there when there's things we can't handle in our backyard. And so that doesn't happen all the time and every day. You know, I grew up in Leamington. There was a town, a time when the town ran educational programs during the summer in the parks. That's not being offered. The equipment that was there that my son played on isn't there, so that doesn't draw him to the park. So the only time we go there, fly the model plane, fly the kite, kick the soccer ball, throw the baseball. And that doesn't happen that much. I moved in, there were no kids on that street. My son was the only kid. There was grandkids that visited across the road. We counted on Rickway, right now, 12 kids, under 12 and under, on that street right now. Okay? And we all play, you know, we've got trampolines in the backyard. We've got pools, there's swing sets, there's ropes on trees. But we don't have a place to kick the ball. And I can't send my six and seven, my seven, almost seven-year-old daughter to Seacliff Park across Erie. Right? I can't send her to the Marina Park by herself across Robson. This is our park. And, yeah, I wish they used it more. But getting kids off video games isn't easy and making the park smaller won't help. It'll make it harder. Okay, thank you.
I appreciate that. I'm, I'm just curious as to the utilization of the, of the, in the park itself. And I agree with you on the video games. I had a grandson there. You're going to most have to strangle him, get him off, but you're right.
The only equipment that's still there is the bump the lawnmower hits when they hit the old sandbox. I put a sandbox in my backyard. If my park had a sandbox that was still functional, I wouldn't have. Right? The sandbox, remnants of the sandbox are still there. You can see where the mowers hit it because the boards are gone. It was the old wooden, wooden sandbox.
And if I may, deputy mayor, Rob, what, like, how much are we, what would be left if, when we go with this? I didn't go through the whole thing here, but like, we're taking off, what, 40, 50 feet for that lot? Or what's the dimensions of the residential lot that we're going up there?
Through you, deputy mayor. I believe the lot is 66 by 130. I think that's what it is. I'd have to check. And I, I believe the remaining, the remaining parkland, I think I measured it at 12,000 square feet. Though that's kind of tough to get into perspective. But you can see it's, it's almost, it would be almost two residential lots, a lot and a half. It's not a large space. It's, it's, would be a smaller parquet, probably our smallest parquet. But you do, you do see small parquets of this size in other communities.
It would be comparable to the ones that we have there now? That, like, the parquetts that are out on, over on Mill Street and on, off of Chestnut and so forth?
Yes, the Mill Street lot, I'm sorry. Yes, the, I'd have to measure them to give you the, council, I'm sorry, to give you the exact, but, but yes. I mean, there's small, small tot lots. You know, the one on Mill Street is a small section that we've, you know, that, that we've used as, as a, as a park. So, yeah, it would be comparable. I'd have to measure them to give you perspective, I'm sorry. But I, but we did, you know, compare the size of these remaining lands to other sizes of small, small parquets in various communities. And it was not out of the question to have a small parquet of this size. Some of them are only one, one lot large, so this is certainly more than that.
Mr. Wilkinson.
Thank you, deputy mayor. I guess my thoughts on this and Larry, I'm going to kind of speak to yours here. I heard you say your shortcut would be taken away, but I think your shortcut would still be there one way or another if the park were to go in. Of the three or the four people that spoke here tonight, I only heard one say that they're really against the, the Habitat for Humanity home. Now, I think it's a great thing that the town, the, what we've been doing with Habitat for Humanity, the partnership we've had with them. And I want to continue to support those type of programs in our town. I think that's a valid thing we're doing. By, and, and I'm all in favor of selling that piece. We heard Mr. Sharon say that that's our only buildable lot that the town owns. So in order for us to be partners with an organization like this, we got to be able to sell them a piece of a property from the town, that the town owns. And that's our only one, I heard Mr. Sharon say. I'm in favor of that lot there now. I'm hearing four people say, though, that the green space park is very important to you. And those are all great things. And I'm surprised to hear that because I think most residents would want this type of park. I think most people would, you know, be happy that they were going to get a park like this in their community. If you don't want the park, you don't want equipment like that, and we just want to leave it as green space, that is an option. Mr. Sharon, could you speak to that? Is that an option? We still sell the, the piece of property for Habitat and their home. Can we leave that as simple green space over there? Is that an option?
Through you, deputy mayor. Certainly, you know, that could be an option. When we looked at this and, you know, personally, I was hoping that it would be, you know, well-received by all. You know, we had the best of intentions and we saw this as potentially a really good win-win because we do recognize that the community there is changing a little bit. So certainly, I mean, the lot, the lot could, the park could either remain open green space or we could develop it, you know, as designed or anywhere in between. And, you know, that was part of the discussion of, you know, meeting with the community. Yeah, depending on, if council were to decide to sell the residential lot or part of the park, that we would again engage the community and say, "Okay, what does the community want?" The challenge with these types of things is that we can't always make everyone happy.
Yeah.
I mean, even in those types of considerations, we could have half the community saying, "Leave a green space. We like to kick the ball around and play soccer and do things." And the other part, the other half saying, "Well, you know, put up some swings and play sets because I have small children." So it's part of it, but certainly would be council's discretion to decide what they would want to do with the remaining lands.
I like the way it sounded too, Rob. I'm surprised that there's objection to it. But I'd like to hear the rest of council. But I am in favor of the, I am in favor of the home going up for Habitat for Humanity there. I am supporting that portion, that's for sure. And what we do at the park, I'd like to hear from the rest of council.
Thank you. Mr. Dunn.
Through you, deputy mayor. Mike, first question is to Rob regarding that. You made a statement earlier about we've only, it's always been, that first lot, the building lot that we're thinking about Habitat for Humanity, that that piece of property has always been owned by the municipality. It might have been used as a park, but it's always been set up? Or has it been changed over the years at some time? Or is it always? If you could speak to that, please.
Sure, that, that's correct. Specifically, how the municipality ended up owning, it, it's always been on the R-plan as a buildable lot, as a residential lot, is my understanding. I was unable to find, I mean, it's 42, 3 years ago, so I was unable to find specifically why we owned a residential lot in addition to a parkland dedication. Though sometimes lots were given in lieu of paying certain fees to municipalities. So that may have been part of the reason why the municipality ended up with it. But it has been, well, it was adjacent to the park and it has been open green space or used as part of the park since 1973.
Thank you. Also, I have a question for Mike from Habitat for Humanity. Mike, the reason for these homes, like, these people that you pick out, what is the criteria? Do they have to put a down payment? Is this, they, would they normally be able to acquire a home on their own through a bank or something? What is the, like, the criteria and, like I said, about down payment?
To partner with Habitat, it's a very stringent criteria. Income is between 24,000 and 46,500 total for the family. The family also is a position where they cannot obtain a commercial standard mortgage. So that takes a family out of a renting situation where they're choosing often between paying their rent and paying for heat and food because owning a home is actually often cheaper than, in this economy, than paying for rent and the auxiliaries. Through the selection process, they have to be able to partner with Habitat for Humanity and also commit to sweat equity, which is 500 hours where they're either donating their time in the restores or assisting on the build themselves. This aspect between the income level, doing sweat equity, they also presently have to be in substandard housing in addition to their ability to afford a mortgage. Because a home is not given, it is sold, so that there's the aspect of homeownership. So there's appreciation in being able to maintain the home. The process for selection can go on up to a year because through that, we've partnered with Financial Fitness, which is another organization present in Leamington and throughout the county. So they go through a review with Financial Fitness as well. And there's the home visit, the office visit, and quite a bit of paperwork because as a nonprofit charity, we, we delve quite deeply before the selection criteria can be approved.
Through you, Mrs., Madam Mayor. The other thing was, I lost it.
Join the club.
Thank you.
If it comes back, just let us know. Mr. Hammond, you had a question or a comment?
Deputy mayor, thanks. You know, this is, when I read through this a time or two, these are decisions that you make that are difficult. Councilor Dunn and I were here when, when we met with the residents. And there was a cross view of opinions. I mean, what I took away from the meeting, Rob, is that some didn't want the park. Some wanted it left exactly as it was. They didn't want any play equipment on it at all. Most had an objection to Habitat building a home. And I was unsure why because I don't think they thought it was going to fit into the neighborhood. To Henry's question about the fence, I don't think you should have to pay for a fence, depending on the outcome of the decision here made tonight, to, you know, to accommodate your property. I understand that and I can see your pool in your backyard. Larry, I know where you're coming from. You know, I, you know, I've, as my kids have grown up, we weren't, we didn't have a park to play in at all. So we played on the street with our kids. All those things you talked about, throwing a football and all those things, we did on the street. Now, back to Habitat, I was pleased when Mike talked about, this isn't a house, it's a home. It's a home for these people. And I will tell you, when they built the ones on the end of Clark Street a number of years ago, in fact, I was fortunate enough to help work on those. A little anecdote, the construction supervisor at the time said to me, "You must be using one of those new lightning hammers." And I said, "Why?" He said, "'Cause it never hits the same spot twice." But, and I was proud to be there. And I worked alongside with the homeowners who were going to get that home. We worked on that for about two months. So there is a need. And for us to welcome Habitat, you know, to humanity here, we need to accommodate these people. And again, it's a difficult decision, especially in light of the fact that you've got homeowners here that, I mean, change is hard to come by. I mean, it's hard to understand. And I like Lee's comment, "As long as we stay in the loop and let you know what's going on." So I too think that there's a need for Habitat. And my decision, even though it isn't going to be to your liking, I think, would be to support the motion. Thank you.
Mr. Rubiki.
Thank you, worthy acting mayor. Good fences make for good neighbors. I'm, I'm sure that Mike would find it somewhere to put up a fence. But I will not be really supporting the recommendation as written because I think if the neighbors don't want, if they want the open spaces, then the 50,000 should be put off to the side for now and then have another meeting if they want to have stuff in there. But as it's written now, I would still look just to see it, green spaces for now and use the 50 and bank it.
I saw Mr. Dunn, he had his memory come back.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Ackerman. My question again, Mike, was that the proceeds from that property, as well as your Habitat for Humanity store, they, that goes into, I remember you explaining this to us the other night at the open house, how that goes into more homes in our community. So that just creates more homes for more people to give them that step up.
Every home built by Habitat, when it's sold, and contractor sells a house, say it's $100, they get $100 if the house is worth that. When Habitat sells a home for $100, I get $1 a month, is the best analogy. So the mortgages, when they come in for all the homes that we've built, go into what's called the build fund. It's a revolving fund that we never use to run the operations of the organization. The more homes that we can build means more mortgage money comes in each month, means more homes we can build. The restore pays for the operations. It pays to have the organization exist. And if there is profits at the end... And if there is profits at the end, then we consort, for example, put them to the builds or come to South Essex with an expansion. The idea is whenever the home is built, the monies always stay for building. Even if the home, for example, the easiest way is if I can build more homes, I can build more homes and more families are served. Because all the donations that go to home building, all the time that goes to home building, stays in home building. We don't take that money and then try to run the operation with it. And that's how habitats exist across Canada, that all the donations we receive for home building stay with it and we sell used materials donated just to exist. And we do it because as a grassroots organization full of volunteers, and we remain that with so few employees in the organization, it's the grassroots cashiers, people working in the back to building, to running electrical. And again, sorry, soap blocks, I get talking and I have trouble stopping.
Mr. Jacobs.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just, Councilor Hammond made a comment there. The home that you build, the design and style is compatible to the neighborhood, correct? You just don't go in and put up, say, a block building as an example?
No. The home? Yes.
You, I guess, mirror the neighborhood, I hope?
We mirror as best as we can. Building codes have changed since the establishment of some neighborhoods. The one that we're building commonly in Windsor is the raised ranch style, which suits neighborhoods quite well. But we are open to that interpretation as well because you don't want to build something that doesn't suit the neighborhood because the idea is it forms a community and you don't want one just standing out. I remember if you go down to Chatham around Oxley where the one doctor bought two lots, got approval from the city and put up a mansion in the middle of a residential neighborhood, it didn't suit it. The homes we build suit it, and I can give you an example. We looked at a piece of property for our next build in Windsor about six months ago. Everything was great, the same type of neighborhood we're looking for, but it fell under an ERCA requirement that due to flooding about 15 years ago, we would have had to raise the property by about two foot and put a retaining wall. While it's not going to suit the neighborhood in any capacity and it will always stand out, so even though it was an amazing piece, we had to back out. The idea is we work with the city so it suits the neighborhood. And, yeah, sorry, again, soap blocks.
No, that's fine, thank you. Mr. Newfelt, I think would like to speak to what Mr. Rubiki was suggesting.
Well, and I think I've heard a few of the councillors speak to this in this regard. So I just want to put this out there for any further discussion, but what I'm hearing is, well, let me do it this way. If council is in favor of selling that lot to Habitat for Humanity to build the house, that's one part of the recommendation. Then the second part of the recommendation speaks to the proceeds of that sale going towards the building of the play, equipment and playground, right? But it seems like this is where council, I've heard, I think I'm hearing council and even some of the people who spoke tonight saying, if you sell that lot, let's still have input from the community about what we do with the remaining lot. So the recommendation may need to be changed somewhat to state perhaps that the proceeds are set aside in a reserve until such time as the residents in that area have been collaborated with with respect to what equipment, if any, goes on there. Then once there's a decision, if it's determined that it's to remain green space, then that $50,000, the proceeds from the sale can then be determined by council what can be done with that. But at the same time, we would need to make that change to the recommendation, setting the $50,000 aside until such time as there's some discussion with the residents. I just wanted to put that out there because I'm starting to hear a common theme here.
Before I ask what council, did you still want to speak to that? Because I wanted to give my, may I give my point of view?
You have the last word.
Well, then you go ahead and be the second last word.
No, I just, the motion states that, but it's just, you know, it was for equipment, so I just want to make sure that it stays for green space, or not green space, well, until further notice. So even though it does say the $50,000 is set aside in parks reserve, it's how you're going to tweak the motion.
Did you want to speak to it?
Well, I would leave that to council. I didn't want to put words in council's mouth. I was just trying to bring the discussion to a conclusion where I thought it was going. But I would, again, I would suggest that if that's the direction council chooses to go, that we work with the words there, but the $50,000 would be set aside in parks reserve until such time as the residents have been consulted and a plan has been determined.
Okay, I'm just going to give, I feel that I need to give my opinion, even though it's easier not to give it. I hear what you're saying. And this is one of those moments when council has to weigh what's good and what's better. And I'm afraid that, well, I'm not afraid, I'm actually quite confident in saying that I feel that that lot needs to go to Habitat for Humanity for all the reasons already said before. The fact that we have lots of people in our community that don't make a lot of money and don't have opportunities to get ahead, and this is one opportunity for one family to get ahead. I would perhaps be a little more sympathetic if there was no parkland left at all. But you still have parkland and as someone else, I believe it was Mr. Hammond, said, he had no, he had no park in his neighborhood. So you've got the jump on a whole lot of people, you still have some parkland. So this is where council has to weigh it and decide what is the better for the most amount of people, for the community as a whole. And to me, that's what this is. It's providing for some other people an opportunity that they would not have. And I think it's the time for us to do that in our neighborhood and in our community. I'm sorry that you won't have as much room to run and to play ball and to do the things you've been doing up until now, but I still feel it's a compromise. So I will be supporting the recommendation. I will, though, go along with if anyone makes the motion to put the money aside to have that dialogue with you and the rest of the neighbors, Larry, because I'm getting that too, that that's what you want. So this, again, the word collaboration, even though that gets piled on that heap of words that everyone pulls out because they seem to be the N-word, but this is really a moment of collaboration where we want to work with you, we want to work with Habitat for Humanity, but we also want to work with the residents there. So I will ask for council's wishes.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I would move the recommendation with the first part as is. However, add to it that the funds for the sale be held in reserve for final decision which will be made by residents and administration and brought back to council.
Seconded by Mr. Hammond. Any comment, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you for coming. We certainly appreciate your input and we hope for a continued dialogue between staff, administration, council and the residents. Thank you very much.
Good night.
Yep, you too. Well, now we are moving on to the report. Federation of Canadian Municipalities Green Municipal Funds. Kit, is that you? Oh, and Shannon, thank you very much. There's a button that says talk.
Yes, I see.
Oh, well, then on the side is a little power button. There you go. You passed the test? Well, not till you push that, well, there you go. You're good.
There we go. Is that better?
You're in.
Okay. Okay, Deputy Mayor and members of council, I'm bringing to you a report to update you on the FCM Green Municipal Fund for the Leamington Pollution Control Center upgrade. Administration had applied for a grant of up to $400,000 as well as a loan back in 2009. You had approved, council had approved the application for the loan and FCM had confirmed that the application was approved for both the potential grant as well as the loan of $2 million. There was no stipulations on the loan and that was received upon completion of the PCC upgrade. However, the grant was dependent on the PCC achieving stringent effluent quality as well as a reduction in bypass events during storm conditions for 12 consecutive months following the completion of the PCC upgrade. This criteria had to be achieved within three years. So the project was completed in September of 2011, which meant that this criteria had to be met by September of 2014 in order to receive the $400,000. With the effluent that we were receiving from the Heinz plant, there was difficulty in achieving the effluent quality at the PCC that was required to meet the grant, the grant fund criteria. When Heinz announced that they were selling and Highbury was going to be taking over, the PCC applied for an extension of the grant for one year, which brought us to having to meet that PCC effluent criteria to September of 2015. This extension was approved by FCM. During the 12 consecutive months after applying for that extension, which brought us from July of 2014 to June of 2015, the PCC was able to achieve that criteria as well as a significant reduction in bypass events that went down from about 76 events per year down to seven, five of which occurred because they had to use the bypass due to the basin being constructed. So as a result of those achievements, the PCC was awarded the $400,000 FCM grant. So that check was received at the beginning of November and the funds have been placed into the PCC reserve account for operating revenue for the PCC. So this report is provided to council for information.
Wonderful, thank you. That's great news. We get some money back.
It's a great first report.
Yes, great first report, that's right. So from here on, we're going to hold your feet to the fire every time. Does any of council want to comment on that?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Welcome.
Thank you.
Now that we have the polyurethane liner, and I know, not to get away from you, but going back to Kit for a moment, that, like, we were very, very fortunate that you have reduced the amount of discharge that we've had to reroute into the lake. Now with this liner in place, will this even reduce the seven down to almost zero unless we have a catastrophic rain or whatever come in?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes, we certainly hope that unless you get two storms, one immediately after the other, because the basin will be full during the first storm and then we wouldn't be able to accommodate the other. So if you get two major storms back to back, we might have to bypass. But other than that, we hope to, yes, get it down to essentially zero.
And my compliments, that you've done a fantastic job with that, you know, and I think that as far as the residents go down there, and not to get off subject maybe for a moment, but I haven't heard any negative impacts this summer in regarding to odors and so forth. Do we have that pretty well under control?
It seems to be much better this year for certain. I mean, I think the reduction in loading to the plant, you know, from the community has certainly helped, but all of the other things that we've been doing have certainly had an impact, we think, yes.
Oh, did you want to speak to that as well? Go ahead. Gentlemen first.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor. In reading through the report in the weekend, I was a little taken back to find out that because we were trying to accommodate the needs of Heinz's that we weren't able to receive a $400,000 grant. And there's a lot of credit needs to be given for you to ask for that extension. So now that we did get that qualification, so good job, Kit and Shannon. Thank you.
If I may, Kit, when we had too many bypasses, was there a fine ever levied from the Ministry of the Environment or anyone? Or were we allowed a certain amount? Or was there any kind of retribution they would seek?
When did he find, as far as your question, Madam Chair? What they did insist on when we went into the upgrade was that we look at and address the combined overflow issue and the fact that we needed to do something in that regard. And that's why we ended up looking at that basin and saying we can use the basin in order to store storm water.
Right.
And that sort of accommodated them, allowing us to proceed with the plant the size it was. Otherwise, we'd have had to address it in some other fashion.
Great. Nice swan song for you.
Well, I just need to pass on to the staff the
Please do.
The council's opinion because I know the staff worked really hard over the last year to achieve the set of criteria.
Great, yep. Yeah, please do pass on our thanks. Okay, so we don't need any motion or anything, we're just going to put that in our files. So we'll move on again, Shannon, to the Leamington Wheatley Water Distribution System Inspection Report.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This report to council is to advise you that the Ministry of the Environment and Climate Change Drinking Water System Inspection Report for the Wheatley Distribution System has been completed and is now available for public review. Just a little bit of background, the Ministry of the Environment and Climate Change completes comprehensive annual inspection programs on municipal residential drinking water systems to determine the compliance with the Safe Drinking Water Act. The Leamington or Wheatley Distribution System was inspected on September 30th and the report was received on October 20th. The prior inspection was done on the Union system in June. The Ministry of the Environment and Climate Change requires that the report be circulated to each member of council and that a council resolution be obtained confirming receipt of the report. The report is also to be made available to the public and advertised as well. The municipal report was provided to you under separate cover. So part of the inspection report, it includes two different sections. The first section deals with noncompliance issues with regulatory requirements. And for the Wheatley Distribution Inspection in September, there were no items of noncompliance reported. The second section deals with the summary of recommendations or best practice issues. And in this section, the ministry provided two recommendations for consideration to Leamington Water Services. The first one deals with their safe, or their, sorry, Standard Operating Practice Number Six, which deals with water main blow-off, flushing and maintenance. The recommendation came through that the SOP be updated to reflect the current procedure for blow-off, flushing and maintenance of water mains. The current procedure states that the dead-end blow-offs and hydrants are flushed annually and that the chlorine residuals are recorded before and after the flush. In actuality, Leamington Water Services is conducting the blow-offs and flushing quarterly and is recording the chlorine residual after the flush. We have proposed to the ministry that we will update SOP to read as follows, that the dead-end blow-offs and hydrant flushings will occur at least annually and the chlorine residuals are recorded after a 15-minute flush. This wording will provide Leamington Water Services with the flexibility to do the flushing quarterly. However, we won't be held to doing it quarterly in our procedure because there is no actual requirement to do it quarterly. So that procedure would be updated in those ways. The second recommendation that came out of the report deals with the water agreement from 2008, that's between the municipality of Leamington and Chatham-Kent Public Utilities Commission. And the recommendation was to ensure that the agreement includes in writing all conditions that are required by Section 5.4 of Ontario Regulation 17003. Currently, Chatham-Kent PUC is meeting all of the requirements of this section of the regulation. However, the recommendation comes because there were two sections in the agreement, or sorry, in Regulation 170 that aren't stipulated in the actual agreement between the town and Chatham-Kent PUC. So the recommendation would be to update that agreement, to put those two sections in writing, but know that Chatham-Kent is actually doing those two things, we just have to document it. So both of these recommendations will be implemented and confirmed with the ministry inspector. And one other thing that we wanted to make you aware of was each ministry report comes back comes back with an inspection summary rating record. And for this particular one, there was no risk rating, it was at 0%. And the final inspection compliance rating was at 100%. So for this particular report, there is no financial impact. And the recommendation to council is that the Ontario Ministry of the Environment and Climate Change Drinking Water System Inspection Report for the Wheatley Distribution System be received, and further that the report be placed on the municipality's website and be made available for public inspection at the clerk's office during regular business hours. Thanks.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Moved by Mr. Rubiki, seconded by Mr. Hammond. All in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. Excuse me for flipping back and forth here. Excuse me. Well, that's it for our reports then. So we move on to matters for approval, and there are the minutes of the mayor's youth advisory committee, sorry, held October 13th, moved by Mr. Rubiki, seconded by Mr. Dunn. All in favor? Carried. No other matters for consideration? Nothing for reports on closed session? And then there's consideration of bylaws.
Bylaw 52215 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council from its meeting held November 16, 2015.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Wilkinson, seconded by Mr. Dunn. All in favor? Carried. And now we're on to the notices of motion. Now, for procedural reasons, it's inappropriate for the chair to put forward a motion while I'm sitting as chair. So I was looking for someone to move that we take it to the next council meeting, if that would be okay. Moved by Mr. Jacobs, seconded by Mr. Rubiki.
Is there any urgency that's applied to this? I know that we had some previous discussions on. If not, I have no problem waiting till next week.
The next council meeting.
Yeah, next council meeting, whenever.
Yeah, I think that's good, yes. If there are no comments or questions, all in favor of that? Thank you. So we're postponing that till the first meeting of the month. Is there anything under open session? Counsel? Staff? Tracy?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I'd like to inform council of two upcoming events. One is a free skate on Friday, November 20th, which is also a PA day, from 1:00 till 3:00 in the Unico Arena. It's National Sports Jersey Day, so everyone's encouraged to wear their jersey and come for the free skate. Also, since the pool was closed several weeks for the installation of the new UV light filtration system, the municipality wants to express our thank you to the community for their patience. And the public is invited to come for a free swim on Saturday, the 21st, which also happens to be National Sports Day in Canada. So the families of the community are welcome to swim from 4:30 to 7:30 p.m.
Thank you Tracy. Anyone else? Oh, I think you should do that. Mr. Newfelt has a comment.
As most of you have noticed, the mayor is not here this evening. The mayor is in Toronto and has been nominated by his alma mater, Lampton College, as a nominee to receive the premier's award. That is going on this evening. I believe it starts somewhere around 9 o'clock this evening. We don't know what the results are going to be, but regardless, our mayor is being recognized by Lampton College and has been nominated for the premier's award, and I think that's pretty special. So we'll wait till December 7th to find out the results.
And he's in good company. I read the other people up for the award, and it's quite impressive. I was pretty proud. So if there's nothing else, then we'll move on to the announcements for upcoming meetings. On Tuesday, tomorrow, there's a public open house for the Rural Heritage Properties from 2:00 till 6:00 here in the gallery at the municipal office. On Wednesday at 9:00 a.m. is the Union Water Board of Management Meeting at the Kingsville Arena. Also, Essex County Council meets at 7:00 p.m. that evening. On Saturday, the 21st of November, we have the Public Information Centre for the Active Transportation Plan from 10:00 a.m. till 3:00 p.m., and that will be in the Kinsman Recreation Complex foyer. On Tuesday, November 24th, we have the Committee of Adjustment at 5:00 p.m. Wednesday, the 25th, the Leamington Heritage Advisory Committee at 3:00 p.m. Wednesday, the 2nd of December, we have Essex County Council at 7:00 p.m. And then Monday, December 7th, we'll meet here again for the council meeting at 6:00. Now, I believe tomorrow at Colosseum, from 2:00 till 4:00, there's an Alzheimer's Society Roundtable. I don't know if anyone's planning on going. They're looking to discuss the issues of dementia and Alzheimer's in the community, and what resources there are, and from all the different perspectives. They're talking to healthcare workers, they're talking to community leaders, I believe EMS, and so on. So if you're inclined to go, it would be really great. I plan to go tomorrow, because the mayor's not here. But if you're going to go, we should RSVP'd, I think, by Friday, but we can fix that. So anyway, statement of members, non-debatable? Oh, sorry, I don't have that on my sheet. Reschedule Police Board Services meeting from, it's at 8:30 on the 25th. And when is it usually? Oh, it needs to be rescheduled. It won't be held on the 25th, it's going to be rescheduled. So stay tuned for further information if you sit on that board. Statement of members, non-debatable? Mr. Dunn.
Deputy Mayor, I've just got a question regarding the free skate and free swim. At what times would be the, sure, because that's the only thing I have, sorry, it may not be a very spot, but...
That's okay. Tracy?
So the free skate on the 20th is from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., and the free swim on Saturday, November 21st, is from 4:30 to 7:30 p.m. in the pool.
And if there's nothing else, then, motion to adjourn? Mr. Wilkinson, seconded by Mr. Dunn. All in favor? Carried.